The February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting of the Saint Joseph County Council is now called to order. Please stand for the invocation, which will be given by Father Jim Brackey, retired staff chaplain at the University of Notre Dame, and remain standing for the plaid allegiance.
Let us bow our heads in prayer. Lord, be in our hearts, our minds, and spirits tonight. May we let go of our egos, our pride, and self-focus. I thank you, good Lord, for the graciousness and willingness of these great council people to serve the citizenry of Saint Joseph County, and we pray that they will always be held in your love. Tonight, in the county, there are many in great need from the homeless, the hungry, the abused, those who are under threat of violence, addictions, and may your justice and peace transform hate into love, peace, and non-violence. May we truly recognize that you are the God of all, and each person represents you. Let us not be afraid to change and be transformed by your love. May also, Lord, in a special way tonight, hold the world in your care and love, especially in Ukraine, where tonight we will seek to find a way to end this terrible, long war, devastating war, and the wonderful people of Ukraine, they be freed from this terror and violence. We also, Lord, remember our fellow citizens in Gaza, Israel, and all of the areas of the world, where such devastation and death reigns as well. We also, Lord, tonight, remember our armed forces, our many great women and men serving often in dangerous areas around the world to keep us free, so that we can gather as we are tonight and give you worship and honor and glory forever and ever. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice, for all.
Thank you, Father Brackey, for your invocation. Next up is petitions, communications, and miscellaneous matters. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January meeting?
Is that moved?
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the January minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The January minutes are approved. Next up is the Saint Joseph County Council Board Appointments. Mr. Fig?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to renominate, or nominate, Saint Joseph County Public Safety Answering Point, PSAP, Mr. Joseph G. Thomas, and Mr. Brian Tanner.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further council discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of appointing Mr. Thomas and Mr. Tanner to the PSAP board, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Joseph G. Thomas and Mr. Brian Tanner are appointed to the Saint Joseph County Public Safety Answering Point or PSAP. That concludes our appointments for tonight. Next up is a report from the county auditor.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Next up is a report from any county commissioners. If you don't see any...
Can you hold on a second?
Yep.
I didn't hear you start at the wrong meeting, and my Zoom was not showing my meeting. So can you hold on a second?
Yep. Back in. Report from county, any county commissioner? Not seeing any, we'll move on to report from any council special committee. Ready, Jen? Let's move on then to first readings. Clerk, will you please read our first bill?
Bill number twenty dash twenty-four, ordinance of the Saint Joseph County Council repealing local oversight and control concerning the prohibition of ultimate fighting. Petitioners, Brian Tanner and Mark Katanzright.
Bill number twenty twenty-four is assigned to the Human Services Criminal Justice Committee.
Bill number twenty-one dash twenty-four, ordinance to repeal ordinance related to property tax abatement in Saint Joseph County. Petitioners, Amy Drake and Joseph G. Thomas.
Bill number twenty-one twenty-four is assigned to the Land Use and Planning Committee.
Bill number twenty-two dash twenty-four, ordinance repealing ordinance number forty-two dash twenty-three and amending and supplementing Title XV, Land Usage, Chapter 154, Planning and Zoning of the Saint Joseph County Code, as amended to amend and expand the Indiana Enterprise Center Overlay District. Petitioner, Area Plan Commission?
Bill number twenty-two dash twenty-four is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill number twenty-three dash twenty-four, ordinance amending and supplementing Title XV, Land Usage, Chapter 154, Planning and Zoning of the Saint Joseph County Code, as amended for property located at three one zero 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 State Road Two and abutting seventy-two plus or minus acres at the southwest corner of the State Road Two and Strawberry Road from A Agricultural District to I Industrial District. Petitioners, Ken and Elaine Sebastian.
Bill number twenty-three dash twenty-four is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill number twenty-four dash twenty-four, ordinance amending and supplementing Title XV, Land Usage, Chapter 154, Planning and Zoning of the Saint Joseph County Code, as amended for property located at five 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 four zero Apple Road from C Commercial District Site Plan Specific to C Commercial District. Petitioner, Grove Property Investments LLC.
Bill number twenty-four dash twenty-four is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill number twenty-five dash twenty-four, ordinance approving the petition for special use filed by Miller Fredericks Trust and its trustee, and Miller Maud Trust and its trustee as to one half in property being located at five four one six nine Tulip Road. Petitioners, Miller Fredericks Trust.
Bill number twenty-five dash twenty-four is assigned to the Land Use and Planning Committee.
Bill number twenty-six dash twenty-four, ordinance to vacate a public way or public place located wholly within the unincorporated portions of Saint Joseph County Public Way or Public Place. Petitioners, Josefina Gonzalez, Elias Gonzalez, and Michael Ray Lips.
Bill number twenty-six dash twenty-four is assigned to the Land Use and Planning Committee. That concludes our first reading for tonight. Next up is resolution. We will start with bill number eighteen dash twenty-four.
Bill eighteen dash twenty-four, resolution of the Saint Joseph County Council indicating potential budgetary adjustments for surveyors' office for calendar year 2025. Petitioners, Brian Tanner and Amy Drake.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
I have one more. Did you assign that, or?
No, we don't assign these. These we're going to deal with.
Okay. Bill number one nineteen dash...
Wait, wait, we got to do bill eighteen twenty-four. So, bill eighteen twenty-four, petitioner, either Mr. Tanner or Ms. Drake.
Oh, we're just doing that. Oh, okay. Sorry. Whereas the Saint Joseph County Council is the fiscal body for Saint Joseph County, whereas the pay structure of, for the Saint Joseph County surveyor was adjusted in 2023 to account for a discrepancy in what was budgeted and the realization that Indiana Code mandates a tiered pay scale dependent on the licensure status of the elected surveyor. Whereas the surveyor's relative pay structure was carried into the budget for 2024 with an unlicensed individual currently in office of the surveyor earning seventy-two thousand and a licensed individual in the office earning one hundred and eight thousand dollars annually. Whereas the Saint Joseph County Council recognizes that this compensation structure, in particular for licensed individuals, would be higher than the position's duties may require in Saint Joseph County outside of the statutory requirements of the state of Indiana for county surveyors, and that an adjustment or correction is likely necessary for the 2025 fiscal year. Whereas the Saint Joseph County Council recognizes that it is prudent to articulate this potential budgetary action for fiscal year 2025, so that the public is aware of the council's intent in this regard, as it is out of the ordinary to reduce a position's budgeted compensation from one year to the next, and a material salary reduction in 2025 is possible. Now, therefore, the Saint Joseph County Council resolves, the Saint Joseph County Council shall closely consider the appropriate level of compensation for the position of county surveyor when setting the county's 2025 budget, and shall attempt to set compensation for this office in a manner that considers the issues articulated in this resolution. The Saint Joseph County Council shall promptly notify the Saint Joseph County Recorder of this resolution upon passage, and shall make copies available to any interested party who requests a copy, and the Saint Joseph County Council may alter or repeal if it deems such modification to be necessary by the passage of an ordinance with the approval of a simple majority of the council. And if I may, Mr. President? For just the public's reference, our community had the privilege, if you will, of not having to worry about this issue for fifty years under the guise of John McNamee, who served as our county surveyor from nineteen seventy-two to 2022, who happened to have been a licensed surveyor that whole time, and this was never a concern for our community to dive in or recognize the stipulation in Indiana Code until it was more or less inadvertently discovered last year and most likely saved us some frustration by the State Board of Accounts during this fiscal year. That's all.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Hearing, Mr. O'Brien?
I apologize, I think that is a typo in letter B. I think there's a typo in letter B where it says recorder rather than surveyor, so I think we're going to need just a simple motion to amend to change recorder to surveyor in letter B.
Oh, I believe letter B mentions that this will, that we will promptly notify the county recorder...
Oh, I got you.
To enable copies to be available to the public.
Got you, okay. Thank you, I apologize.
Not a typo.
Good catch, Mr. Tanner.
And good draft, Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Tanner.
So, point of clarification, obviously, this is a resolution, and we still will vote on the, on the level of the salary during the budget process. Okay.
Yes, and, and the reason why, I believe, it was brought up at our last committee meeting by myself and, and raised with President Root prior to that, was that it was prudent for us to be open and honest about this during the filing process for candidates who may or may not be running for county surveyor this year. I believe the filing period ended last week, but there's still an opportunity for people to be appointed to any vacancies on the ballot for this fall, and with the intention of any change to this salary that may be warranted is forecasted by this resolution in order for it to not be interpreted as retaliatory later on in the budgetary season.
I guess one question from Mr. Dalton. It was said to me that you can, any elected official, you can raise the salary, but you can't lower it. I'm not saying that that's true, I'm just saying that someone brought that to my attention.
My understanding is that that does not apply to counties, that counties can lower elected official pay. There are some specific annual events where that can and cannot happen, and you might have to do some digging in the statute between now and the budget to determine whether or not you could lower a elected official's pay the year before they're elected. I'm not sure of that.
So that's what, okay, so that is still up for discussion?
It is up for discussion.
Okay, thank you for that, that clarification.
We might have the attorneys look at that.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
And, and I believe Mr. O'Brien could confirm this, but this is a non-binding resolution.
No, I realize that. I realize that. I'm just trying to make sure for my own edification.
Anything else from the council for the petitioner? Thank you, Mr. Tanner. If not, we'll open the public hearing on bill number eighteen dash twenty-four. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the resolution? Seeing no one, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the resolution? Seeing no one, public hearing on bill number eighteen dash twenty-four is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill?
Motion to pass. Second.
A motion to pass eighteen twenty-four was made by Councilman Shetzel and seconded by Councilman Thomas. Any further council discussion? All in favor of bill eighteen twenty-four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Resolution eighteen twenty-four is passed. Clerk, will you please read our next bill?
Bill number nineteen dash twenty-four, a resolution of the Saint Joseph County Council supporting the country of Ukraine and denouncing the atrocities inflicted on its people. Petitioner, Mark Katanzright and Brian Tanner.
Thank you. Mr. Katanzright.
President Root, if I may indulge the council and the audience, there's a locally-produced short, very short video. If I could have that played just for...
Yep, go ahead.
...a short period of time.
Breaking news tonight, Russia launching a full-scale invasion of Ukraine.
Since the war began in February 2022, Russia has attacked hundreds of non-military targets.
Russian forces bombed a theater.
A ballistic missile struck.
Thousands of Ukrainians have died, and hundreds of cultural sites have been destroyed. It's a tactic seen through history to try and strip a people of their identity and their fundamental right to exist. As an archaeologist who's a specialist in the destruction of cultural heritage, I couldn't just watch from a world away when I knew I could help.
In March of 2023, Notre Dame anthropology professor Ian Kite and film professor Bill Donnarumma traveled to Ukraine to teach students at the Ukrainian Catholic University the principles and techniques of documenting the destruction of their cultural sites.
Through film, we can capture a moment in history and have it indefinitely. Our goal in Lviv was to teach documentary film and archaeological techniques to the master's students. By sharing our expertise, these students can be better keepers of their own culture and history.
The full-scale war made me understand that there can be no tomorrow, and you know that you are studying not only for yourself, but for your country's future.
I welcome all of you. It's great to see you. What does it look like on the ground? What does it feel like being in Lviv at this point?
I realized how dramatically our lives changed.
Getting used to the war does not mean resigning.
What kind of resources can we help with?
As a member of a university rooted in a moral position of helping others, it's our obligation to show them they're not alone in this.
The University of Notre Dame asks, what would you fight for?
We are the Fighting Irish.
Thank you, President Root. Bill nineteen twenty-four, resolution reads as follows: Whereas since the occupation of the Crimean Peninsula and Russian-sponsored military action in the eastern regions of Ukraine beginning in 2014, as well as the further aggression before the full-scale invasion of Ukraine in February 2022, there were over seventy-seven hundred Ukrainians killed, including thirty-four hundred civilians, with cases of kidnapping and torture. Whereas since Vladimir Putin directed the full-scale Russian invasion of Ukraine in 2022, there have been over eleven thousand civilian deaths, over nineteen thousand civilians wounded, seventy thousand Ukrainian military forces killed, fifteen thousand military members missing, as well as an equal number, if not greater, number of Russian military forces killed and missing as well. Whereas the military aggression by Russia is a blatant violation of international law and Ukraine's internationally recognized borders, and Russia has breached numerous treaties by this unjustified attack, including its own obligations to uphold Ukraine's legally-recognized borders as established in the 1994 Budapest Memorandum, by which Ukraine surrendered its entire nuclear arsenal, the first nation voluntarily to do so. Whereas Russian disinformation and propaganda campaigns have sought to legitimize the war and hide its criminal nature, not the least by denying Ukrainian nationhood and even Ukrainians' right to exist as such, is a discourse genocidal in nature. Whereas there have been indiscriminate attacks on known civilian targets, including residences, schools, infrastructure, and hospitals, that have caused the deaths of over five hundred children, as well as cases of torture, rape, and murder of civilians in Russian-controlled territories. Whereas the invasion of Ukraine is an attack on the entire world's rules-based international order, and over a hundred and seventy-two civilians from twenty-four different countries have died as a result of Putin's military directive. And whereas Ukraine, like any other sovereign nation, has been rightfully defending its legal borders and the human rights of its citizens. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we on the Saint Joseph County Council condemn in the strongest of terms this heinous assault on the people of Ukraine by Russia under the direction of Vladimir Putin. We stand in solidarity with our ally, Ukraine, and express our deepest sympathy and sorrow for the death and decimation of innocent lives, especially those who have ties to our community as immigrants, refugees, students from institutions of higher learning, and religious communities. This bill has come before the county council on this thirteenth day of February 2024, sponsored by myself and Brian Tanner. Coming up on the two-year anniversary of the invasion in Ukraine, Mr. Root and council members, I felt it was necessary, since we just recognized the heinous attack on Israel by Hamas, that it might be appropriate if we also recognize what's been going on in Ukraine for the last couple of years. So I encourage and ask for your support of this resolution tonight.
Any questions from the council for Mr. Katanzright? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on...
Mr. Root, I'm sorry, I'm late. Can I say something?
Mr. Shetzel.
Thank you. I don't have a question, but I did want to comment. Last year, in, I believe it was January, a young lady joined my U.S. history class at Penn High School. Her family had just left Ukraine, and we were studying the Great Depression, and of course, the saga that comes after that is World War II. And as we're studying World War II, and I begin to show videos, she put her head down. She couldn't watch. And I talked to her afterwards, and she said, "I can't watch people being killed. I can't watch bombs dropping because of what was happening to her family and to her people." So I, thank you, Mr. Tanner, Mr. Katanzright, for bringing this to the council. I think it's very important that we stand as Americans for nations of people whose culture, history, and sense of identity are under imminent and consistent attack. So, thank you.
We will now open to public hearing on bill number eighteen, nineteen dash twenty-four. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in support of the resolution? Please come forward. You'll have three minutes to address the council. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'll be up there now.
Yep.
Tom Rowe, two six one six zero, Lake Lane, South Bend, Indiana. I want to thank the council members that introduced this, so we can have this in vivid memory. It is my sincere hope that it's a straight nine-to-zero vote on this, but that's up to you, okay, favoring this resolution. For those of you that have seen war, I have seen it, and it's an atrocity as I see it right now. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the resolution? Again, please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Joan Downs-Kristenko, and I live at eight four nine Forest Avenue in South Bend. I wanted to say thank you for recognizing the injustice of the Roman, of the Russian invasion in Ukraine. It's incumbent upon us to call out injustice and brutalization of innocent people wherever we see it, and sadly, in our world today, this moment in Ukraine makes them not alone or unique. But that does not diminish the righteousness of Ukraine's cause, the heroism of its people, and the moral responsibility we all have towards its support. Slava Ukraini.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the resolution? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor of the resolution? Seeing no one, is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition to the resolution? Seeing no one, is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? The public hearing on bill number nineteen dash twenty-four is now closed. May I have a motion, please?
Move for approval.
Second. Motion to approve was made by Councilmember Hess. It was seconded by Councilmember Tanner. Any further council discussion on the resolution? Mr. Tanner.
Thank you, Mr. President. While it's worth noting that residents throughout the county who may have connections to Ukraine exist well beyond the bounds of this particular location or a member of this particular parish, I think it's worth noting the long history and connection that our community has had with Ukraine. For those who are unaware, there's been a long-established parish in Mishawaka on Lawrence Street, Saint Michael's Ukrainian Catholic Orthodox Church. It's, it's beautiful and a connection from a cultural, architectural, and religious standpoint, and we thank them and welcome them as part of our community.
Thank you. Any other council member wish to speak?
Mr. Katanzright. Mr. Root, I just would also mention, a lot of the refugees that have been relocated to our country, and in our area in particular, have ended up in Elkhart County, and there's also another religious institution, the Slavic Baptist Church, Church in Goshen, a lot of them attend, and a lot of the refugees have ended up in Goshen. But if anybody who is here supporting this resolution tonight, or of, who's of Ukrainian descent, or would like to stand, I would ask in the audience if they would just stand, if they support this. I know we only had two speakers get up. I think there's some Ukrainian delegation here, and I really appreciate them coming out tonight. We thank you, and we offer our sincerest sympathies for what's taking place in your country, in your, in your family's homeland. Thank you, Mr. Root.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll on bill number nineteen dash twenty-four?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine-zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number nineteen dash twenty-four was passed by a vote, unanimous vote of nine to zero. Concludes our resolutions for tonight. Next up, our salary amendments. Our first one is, our first two, actually, bill number eight twenty-four and nine twenty-four, along with the companion part in the spending bills, Part B and C. We need a motion to table those until the March meeting.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Root, to table these till next month.
A motion to table eight twenty-four, nine twenty-four, and parts B and C of the spending bill until the March meeting was made by Councilman Fig. It was seconded by Councilman Morton. Any council discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bills number eight twenty-four, nine twenty-four, and parts B and C of the spending bill are tabled until the March meeting. Thank you. Now moving on to the bills that we need to act on tonight. Bill number ten twenty-four.
Bill number ten twenty-four, ordinance amending ordinance one oh seven dash twenty-three, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of Saint Joseph County Council for the year 2024. Petitioner, clerk.
Committee report, please.
Bill number ten dash twenty-four comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Petitioner?
Hello, I'm Amy Rolfs. I'm the clerk of the Circuit Court. My office is in the basement of Courthouse One. This is a clarification for the county deputy attorney to be the attorney for the clerk and for the election board. It's just a clarification in the budget.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on bill number ten dash twenty-four. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing no one, is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? The public hearing on Bill number 10-24 is now closed. May I have a motion?
Motion approved. Second.
Motion to approve was made by Mr. Thomas. It was seconded by Mr. Schetzel. Any further council discussion on the bill? Mr. Murphy, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Schetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katandry?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine-zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 10-24 was passed by a vote of nine-to-zero.
Thank you.
Our next bill is Bill number 1124.
Bill 1124, amending ordinance 107-23, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of Saint Joseph County Council for the year 2024. Petitioner, prosecutor.
Committee report, please, Mrs. Drake?
Bill number 1124 comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Yes, Bob Raisenhover, Prosecutor's Office. Office is on the 10th floor of this building. We're here this evening to ask for an appropriation and salary amendment for the supervisor of the prosecutor's pretrial diversion department. The person will be responsible for doing all of the felony and misdemeanor pretrial, and the money will come from the diversion fund for both salary, $10,000 adjustment, and the fringes. There's no change to the county budget.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Hearing done. We'll move to public hearing on Bill 1124. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing no one, is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Anyone online? Seeing no one, the public hearing on Bill number 11-24 is now closed. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Councilman Fig. It was seconded by Councilman Morton. Any further council discussion? Hearing done. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Schetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katandry?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine-zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 11-24 was passed by a vote of nine-to-zero.
Thank you.
Our next bill is Bill number 12-24.
Bill number 12-24, amending ordinance 107-23, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of Saint Joseph County Council for the year 2024. Petitioner, jail, county jail.
Thank you. Committee report, please.
Bill number 1224 comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Steve Noonan, executive officer for the sheriff's offices at 401 West Sample in the county jail. This is kind of a two-pronged. One is, we would like to establish the position of two bond clerks that would work Monday through Friday, business hours, 8:00 to 4:30, when the majority of the people come to the front tower. This will allow us to bring two, actually four corrections officers, because we would shut the front tower down from 4:30 in the afternoon, and then jail supervisors can handle any bales after that. Also, we would like to possibly hire four to six part-time positions. We've had some staff that has been trained that have expressed an interest in coming back. They left due to school and family circumstances, but have said that they would like to come back part-time. They would work under 32 hours, so they would not be eligible for benefits.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Hearing done. We'll open to public hearing on Bill number 12-24. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing no one, is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Anyone online? The public hearing on Bill number 12-24 is now closed. May I have a motion, please?
Motion move favorably.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Councilman Tanner. It was seconded by Councilman Thomas. Any further council discussion? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katandry?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Schetzel?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine-zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 12-24 was passed by a vote of nine-to-zero. Next up is Bill number 1324.
Bill number 13-24, amending ordinance 107-23, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of Saint Joseph County for the year 2024. Petitioner, probate court, JJC.
Committee report, please.
Bill number 1324 comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Hi, Brenda Matthews-Skevich, Executive Director, CASA Program of Saint Joseph County. Offices at 1,000 South Michigan Street, South Bend. This is a request for an appropriation from CASA funds through our grant fund 1213. It's an appropriation of $2,432 for our program coordinator. It would take, increase her salary by that much, taking it to 46,396. That would be equivalent of what the salary is for new people starting with the program. She is almost a 16-year employee with the program. She's a key, essential employee. There is no change to the county budget whatsoever. This is coming from our funds. It's primarily state funds from the Indiana State Office of GL CASA. We are also requesting that the amendment be retroactive to the beginning of the budget year of 2024. And I believe that's it.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner?
Mr. Root?
Mr. Schetzel?
Or President Root, sorry. Just for the public to understand why we're giving this money, can you explain the duties of this person? And are we increasing them to a director's position? Is that correct? Or not?
No.
Okay.
She is not a director. She's the program coordinator.
Okay.
She was nominated Employee of the Month a few years ago, and she did win that award. She's a public servant. She greets the community. You know, our office is an extremely busy office. We have the Department of Child Services, providers, parties to child in need of services cases coming through our office on a regular basis. She's responsible for everyone visiting our office, for our phones. We have over 100 volunteers, and they're in and out of our office on a regular basis for court. She trains new staff and volunteers on our database system and the Quest Court system. She helps prepare files for discovery. She's responsible for all documents coming into the building. And, you know, frankly, the nature of the population of the people that we serve, sometimes it's a hostile environment. I could go on and on. She prepares, you know, a lot of reports with my assistance for state, national, Victims of Crime Act grant funds, things like that. So she's a pretty important person within our program. She's actually even taken over caseloads at points in time where I might have been out on, you know, FMLA, or we had a staff person that was out of the office for some extended period of time. She's loyal, dedicated, and like I said, been with the program for 16 years at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, we'll move to public hearing on Bill number 13-24. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone online? Seeing no one, is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Anyone online? Public hearing is now closed on Bill number 13-24. May I have a motion, please?
Move for approval.
Motion to pass was made by Councilmember Hess, seconded by Mr. Morton, I believe. Any further council discussion on the bill? Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katandry?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Schetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine-zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 13-24 was passed by a vote of nine-to-zero. Next up is Bill number 1424.
Bill 1424, amending ordinance 107-23, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of Saint Joseph County for the year 2024. Petitioner, Health Department.
Committee report, please.
Oh, sorry. Bill number 1424 comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Amy Rupe, Administrator for the Department of Health with offices on the 8th and 9th floor of the county city building. And our request in County Health Fund 1159 is a request to offload two staff members to the Health First Indiana Fund, so we can create two new positions, two new positions in our county health budget. The one position is a Director of Operations, and they will help support the additional staff and workload from Health First Indiana, handle the day-to-day operations, the management of all Department of Health staff, the creation of an internship and fellowship program, as well as an active volunteer program. The second position is a Communications and Events Specialist, and they will be tasked with all of our public messaging and event planning between all of our units and our community. This request is less, does take away funds from our 2024 budget, where this request is $1,039 less than what our budget was approved for.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Seeing none, we'll move to public hearing on Bill number 14-24. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing none, is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Is there anyone online? Public hearing on Bill number 14-24 is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Morton. Any further council discussion? Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilwoman Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katandry?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Schetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine-zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 14-24 was passed by a vote of nine-to-zero. Next up is Bill number 1524.
Bill number 1524, amending ordinance 107-23, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of Saint Joseph County for the year 2024. Petitioner, Health Department.
Committee report, please.
Bill number 1524 comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Our request for the local Public Health Services Fund, which is the Health First Indiana Fund, would include the two positions that we just approved to offload from the County Health Department Fund, which is the Director of Hope and the Health Promotion Specialist. The duties of the Hope unit are being slowly transitioned to the Care Unit, Care Unit, excuse me, which was formerly the Heed Unit. So once that transition is complete, the Director of Hope position would be eliminated. New positions we would like to include in this fund is a Director of Community Partnerships and Development, who would be responsible for creating, cultivating, and maintaining community partnerships as it relates to Health First Indiana funding, as well as overseeing the process for Health First Indiana grant requests, programs, and key performance indicators. They would also be responsible for identifying, executing, and maintaining external grant opportunities for the whole Department of Health. A nurse to add, an additional nurse to assist with the care management of communicable diseases, a food service specialist, as well as a certified pool operator to assist with the number of food inspections done yearly per establishment. And lastly, a lead program coordinator, where additional duties would be added to the Disease Investigation Specialist focusing on lead poisoning prevention, to create a position to oversee the coordination of all lead efforts within the Department of Health.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner?
President Root?
Mr. Schetzel?
So we had a good discussion in committee, and I kind of wanted to maybe abbreviate it so that the public has an idea of how we're holding these community partners accountable. So the money's coming from Health First Indiana through our Health Department to these community partners, correct?
That is correct. They've applied for grants.
Correct. And so how are you holding the community partners accountable for getting results with the money that they're getting? And you, when we talked about, you talked about performance indicators. So could you kind of parrot that discussion?
Correct. The key performance indicators, and I'm actually going to defer to Robin Vida. She has been working with each of the 19 awards that we would like to offer, with each one of them on the key performance indicators specific to their grant requests. So, Robin, are you able to join?
I am. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Robin Vida, Director of Health Outreach, Promotion, Education, Saint Joseph County Department of Health. Yes, each of the community organizations funded through Health First Funds will be responsible for reporting developed KPIs, or Key Performance Indicators, that we've developed based off of their program proposals, and predetermined either their baseline information, if this is a program that they are looking to expand, and/or other existing program data in the event that this is a new program, so that we are able to track quarterly Key Performance Indicators to show success, and even more importantly, track to see if something needs to pivot and change so that there is success.
Any other questions from the council for the petitioners? Seeing none, we will move to public hearing on Bill number 15-24. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing no one, is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Is there anyone online? Seeing none, public hearing on Bill number 15-24 is now closed. May I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Tanner. Any further council discussion? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Katandry?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Schetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine-zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 15-24 was passed by a vote of nine-to-zero. Next up is Bill number 1624.
Bill number 1624, amending ordinance 107-23, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of Saint Joseph County for the year 2024. Petitioner, Health Department.
Committee report, please.
Oh, sorry. I keep phasing out. Bill number 1624 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
This one and the next one are, I'm going to lump together in my description. This one and the next one are, I'm going to lump together in my description. This is a request to create a dedicated vector program in St. Joseph County. With that, we would like to create, or create new positions for three staff. One would be a vector coordinator, another would be a vector slash environmental health specialist hybrid position, and then a part-time vector specialist, all to work on the vector program year-round.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Seeing none, we'll move to public hearing on bill number sixteen twenty-four. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Anyone online? Seeing no one, anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Any online? Public hearing on bill number sixteen dash twenty-four is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill?
Motion to approve? Second.
Motion to approve was made by Councilman Fig, seconded by Councilman Katanzright. Any further council discussion? Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine-zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number sixteen dash twenty-four was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next up is bill number seventeen twenty-four.
Bill number seventeen twenty-four, an ordinance, amending ordinance one-oh-seven dash twenty-three, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2024. Petitioner Health Department.
Committee report, please.
Bill number seventeen twenty-four comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
As a companion to the presentation on sixteen twenty-four, I would make a motion to send this for a vote and ask that we pass bill seventeen twenty-four.
I'm sorry, Mr. Katanzright? What was your motion?
Motion to pass.
Oh, you want to, uh... Yeah, we probably don't need the petitioner. We'd probably still have a public hearing since it's a separate bill. So let's go ahead, and is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of bill seventeen twenty-four? Is there anyone online? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Anyone online? Most, the public hearing is now closed on bill number seventeen twenty-four. We have a motion to pass for Mr. Katanzright. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to pass this bill made by Councilman Katanzright, seconded by Councilman Morton. Any further council discussion? Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine-zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number seventeen dash twenty-four was passed by a vote of nine to zero. That concludes our salary amendments for tonight. Next up is public hearing, public comment on fiscal matters. All fiscal matters were heard and discussed by the council at the January committee meeting. So we will move into the public hearing portion. This includes all items between A and N on the agenda, except for items B and C which were tabled. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of any item in bill? Well, I need a clerk to probably, did you read this one?
I haven't read it yet.
I always forget to have you read this one. Go ahead and read this one.
Bill number seven dash twenty-four, an ordinance appropriating and transferring monies for the purposes herein specified for the several departments here enlisted of St. Joseph County Government.
We will now open the public hearing on bill seven twenty-four. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak to any portion of bill seven twenty-four? Anyone online? Seeing no one, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to any portion of bill seven twenty-four? Anyone online? Seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed on bill seven twenty-four. May I have a motion?
Vote for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Councilwoman Hess, it was seconded by Councilman Katanzright. Any further council discussion on the bill?
President Root?
Mr. Shetzel?
Could I quickly just ask, because I think a lot of people don't understand where DARE money comes from? Ask Officer Noonan, just explain that real quick.
Officer Noonan, are you still on?
Yes, I am. Steve Noonan, Executive Officer for the St. Joe County Police Department, offices four-oh-one West Sample. That comes basically from different fundraisers and donations. Examples of fundraisers they've done in the past is golf outings. They did a Sky Zone event, things such as that. It's basically through donations and fundraisers.
Okay, and then the money goes into a county account, and then you, we appropriate out of that to you to use, is that correct?
Yes, and most of it is used for supplies such as notebooks that are used for the DARE curriculum, as well as pencils and other supplies.
Thank you.
Any further council comment? Ready to vote? Clerk, will you take the roll, please?
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine-zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number seven dash twenty-four was passed by a vote of nine to zero. That concludes our fiscal matters for tonight. Next up is land use planning, bill number six dash twenty-four.
Yes, Mr. President. Bill number six dash twenty-four comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Area plan?
I should go ahead and read it first?
Oh, yeah.
Bill number six dash twenty-four, an ordinance approving the petitioner for a special use filed by Ene LLC for property located at one-two-six-seven-zero State Road twenty-three Highway. Petitioner, Ene LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Area plan?
Fariel Sharif Area Plan Commission Staff, offices on the eleventh floor. This is a special use petition for a proposed tattoo salon at property off State Road twenty-three in Granger. Property is Zone C commercial. Tattoo salons are considered a controlled use under the current zoning ordinance and require a special use to be permitted in the commercial district. Jen, do you think you could click on the PowerPoint real quick? Awesome. Yeah, my clicker is not working. Oh, probably have to turn it on like I did last time. Didn't learn my lesson. Okay. Property is a one-story retail plaza with two units. Petitioners currently operate a beauty salon in the front suite of this building. They'd like to expand their services to include some kinds of tattooing and permanent makeup. There are no other proposed changes to the site, and approval would just allow them to do tattoos at their salon. This portion of State Road twenty-three corridor has mostly developed to be commercial in nature with other retail and service businesses nearby. Staff has found that state law criteria has been met. The proposed use will have no impact on public comfort, morals, general welfare, no changes that would affect property values adversely and non-conflict with a comprehensive plan and in line with the character of the surrounding district. This petition was heard by our Area Board of Zoning Appeals at their January meeting. At that public hearing, we had no public comments on the petition, and board voted to move it forward with a unanimous favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for area plan? Seeing none, is the petitioner here? Please state your name and address for the record. You have five minutes to address the council.
Hi, I'm Mayor Valafana here, two-zero-two Fort Street. My partner and I are here just to ask for approval for expanding our services in the PMU world and tattooing along with their new studio.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioners?
President Root, I have one quick question.
Yep, Mr. Shetzel.
Do you plan on changing the outside of the building at all, or are we going to stay with that?
Yes, I've been wanting to, but my partner here doesn't want to, so we're kind of grown on me. Thank you.
The pink is, catches your eye, for sure. I was just wondering what was going to happen.
But it does call the attention.
Thank you.
Any further council questions? Hearing done, we will open to public hearing on bill number six dash twenty-four. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? I'm not seeing any hands along the side. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Public hearing on bill number six dash twenty-four is now closed. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Mr. Shetzel. It was seconded by Ms. Hess. Any further council discussion, please? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine-zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number six dash twenty-four was passed by a vote of nine to zero. That concludes our land use planning items for tonight. Next up is miscellaneous items. Mr. Murphy, will you please read our bill number one dash twenty-four?
Bill number one dash twenty-four, an ordinance of the St. Joseph County Council approving the issuance of taxable general obligation bonds by the St. Joseph County Airport Authority for the purpose of providing funds to be applied to all or portion of the costs of acquisition, construction, and equipping of car rental facilities and incidental costs in connections therewith, and to pay cost of issuance of the bonds, and approving the additional appropriations by the Airport Authority of the proceeds of the bond. Petitioner, Phil Fasenda.
Thank you. Committee report, please.
Bill number one dash twenty-four comes to the council, to the full council with no recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the council. Phil Fasenda from Barnes and Thornburg, two-oh-one South Main Street, South Bend, here on behalf of the Airport Authority. The ordinance that's before you is the approval of an ordinance, a bond ordinance, and additional appropriation ordinance already adopted by the Airport Authority on January twenty-fifth of this year. That bond ordinance and additional appropriation ordinance approves a project for the construction of a, of a quick turnaround facility at the airport, for the consolidation of the maintenance, cleaning, and refueling of car rental cars and, and other automobiles. The bond amount is in an amount of not to exceed six million, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. The interest rate that is reflected in the authority's ordinance is an amount not to exceed eight percent. It is hoped by the authority that that number would be closer to six percent, given current market conditions. The bonds have a final maturity of, of not to exceed twenty years. Again, currently estimated by the authority to be somewhere in the neighborhood of twelve years when they actually close on the bonds. The, the bonds will, it is anticipated, reasonably anticipated, that the bonds will be repaid from customer facility charges, that the airport collects, and that no tax levy will be necessary as a result of the bond issuance, which is a similar structure that the, the airport has followed in the past. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have on this project, and we also have representatives from the airport here and from Baker Tilly to answer.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioners? Seeing none, we will open to public hearing on bill number six, one dash twenty-four. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing none, the closing, the public hearing on bill number one dash twenty-four is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Councilman Shetzel. It was seconded by Councilman Fig. Any further council discussion on this bill?
Mr. Root?
Mr. Katanzright?
I know it's not related to this necessarily, but I'm curious if Mr. Daigle can give us a report as to the negotiations between the South Shore Railroad and the airport, since you are here present tonight. Would you give us any update on that? As to the December twenty-twenty-one contract that's still expired?
Mike Daigle, CEO and Executive Director, South Bend International Airport. The negotiations are ongoing. There have been counter proposals, gone in both directions. And as you said, this is not related to the bond resolution or the bond ordinance that we've requested. So I'll stop there for now.
Any further council questions for the petitioners? Any further council discussion on the bill?
President Root, can I just make a comment?
Mr. Shetzel?
I just noticed in the paper this morning, a great article about things going on, new service to, I believe it was Knoxville, I believe, and also based upon the use of the airport so far this year, how it's possible that we could see record numbers. So congratulations to you, Mr. Daigle, and your staff.
Thank you, sir. We have a terrific team working very hard each and every day.
Mr. Thomas? Mr. Thomas?
Quick question, user fees, I should have asked Mr. Fasenda that. User fees, are we paying for a lot of this?
So the user fee from this is when you, when the customers arrive to rent the rental cars, it's included in the rental car contract, just like when all of us travel to other locations, it's a similar fee that's in all of those rental car contracts at the destination. And so the bond will be paid by visitors to our community.
Thank you.
Through the user fee, yes.
Any further council questions for the petitioners? Any further council discussion on the bill? Thank you, Mr. Daigle. Hearing none, I think we're ready to vote. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine-zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number one dash twenty-four was passed by a vote of nine to zero. That concludes our miscellaneous matters for tonight. Next up is any unfinished business? Seeing none, next up is new business. We need to review and approve Mr. O'Brien's legal invoices for the month of January. May I have a motion?
Motion to pass.
Second.
Motion to pass was made by Councilwoman Drake, seconded by Councilman Fig. Any further council discussions on the motion? All in favor of approving Mr. O'Brien's legal fees for January, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The invoice is approved. Any old business? Privilege of the floor, limited to three minutes, to any item not on tonight's agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and again, you have three minutes to address the council on any item not on the agenda.
Tomaro, two-six-one-six-zero, Lake Lane, South Bend, Indiana, four-six-six-one-nine. When I read the privilege of the floor, I don't believe this item was on the agenda. I was hoping that there, there's a little bit of confusion with the technology at that point in time as far as county commissioners' report. Was there a county commissioners' report or not tonight?
No, there was not tonight.
I just want to make sure, okay? So my concern is this. I know that there's two separate bodies, commissioners and St. Joe County Council, but I feel to a certain extent, there's maybe a little bit of a...
Can you speak up, sir?
I feel to a certain extent, there's a little bit of an elephant in the room. The elephant, as I perceive it, is just on Friday, I believe, that I, I get my news from the newspaper, thank goodness, okay? And part of the information was, St. Joe County Commissioner Carl Backsmar starts a press conference on a task force seeking alternatives for low-barrier homeless intake center. A, I don't know who has the authority, maybe he does, just to appoint a task force. But that'd be interesting to find out to begin with as to how this evolves. And if so, if there are all these slight sites that may be selected, I think it's important that the citizens of St. Joe County have more knowledge as to what those sites may or be not. That's why it comes to these meetings, transparency, what's really happening, okay? And I would be remiss, because I know this is all part of the public record that's being taped, okay, and that's great, but I'd be remiss to say maybe there needs to be a better mechanism to inform the citizens, because I don't think a lot of citizens are going to go to the county council, county commissioners' websites, and find out what's happening, if that's even correct. So once again, I'm making a plea for transparency, some information. So if you're picking certain sites that nobody's aware of, and all of a sudden we're having some type of a meeting to approve that site, then hopefully there, there can be better some type of a meeting to approve that site, then hopefully there can be better information provided. That's why I come to the meetings. Thank you.
Sir?
Yes?
If I may-
Please.
This task force is in the very beginning stages.
I understand.
Okay, and from my knowledge, there are beginning discussions, operative word being beginning, discussions on the feasibility of possible alternatives. And there are ongoing discussions, and this is, from my perspective, nothing that's going to be decided without the public being aware of it.
And I thank you for that response, but I feel it's like my appropriate response to start at the very beginning, but haven't noticed this is just the beginning of these discussions, so that we can be informed, okay?
I appreciate, I appreciate your interest. That's the bottom line.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Could I add to that?
Mr. Schetzel?
You know, if you want to get to the very beginning, you might go to the next city council meeting and ask the mayor how six days from letting the public know about buying the property from the school, that he was ready to have their redevelopment commission make a motion to buy that property. That would be an interesting question to see how that choice was made.
And I intend to. I only have certain time. I'm retired, but I have a lot of responsibilities to get to certain meetings, okay? But I'd love to do that, too.
Very good.
To find out that information. Once again, it's not a position that I want to take at this point in time. It's to have knowledge, okay?
Excellent.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room who wishes to take advantage of privilege of the floor?
Yes, I'd like to.
I see a couple of hands on, online, so we will start with Mary. Mary, please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to address the council.
Hi, Mary Countryman, 52959 Timothy Road, New Curlisle. Just wanted to let everybody know you, so maybe you can prepare for it. The inventory of all U.S. beef cattle on January 1st, 2024, was down 2% from 2023. The decline follows a 4% drop in beef herd inventory from '22 to '23. This is the smallest beef herd since 1951. Weather, range conditions, impacted hay and grain production. Drought forced ranchers to sell not only their steers, but breeding cows and heifers. The beef industry is in the midst of one of its largest declines in beef production. A lot of this is related to the loss of farmland and drought. This will have a, will have significant ramifications for everyone, from consumers to cattle producers. Consumers will face higher retail prices than they did last year. But when you're at the grocery store and see the price increases, again, this is why, loss of land and lack of water in so much of the United States. We are so fortunate to have prime farmland and have a water source available in our area. We, hopefully, we don't squander that away to anything. According to the USDA, by 2022, U.S. farmland acreage dropped by almost 50 million acres, which is equivalent to losing all the farmland in Indiana three times over. Per Green Street Advisory Group, which recorded, researched, I'm sorry, researched invent, investing in 2021, they explained the supply side of this equation like this. Supply growth is everywhere in commercial and real estate, and oversupply is often the catalyst for downturns. In U.S., in contrast, the U.S. farmland has experienced decreasing supply of available land due to land being taken offline for commercial, real estate development, transportation networks, and other uses. Supply may decrease even further with water losses and potential decreases in overall productivity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Michael. Michael, please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to address the council.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you. Mike McManus, 51940 Lilac Road. I would just like to follow up on the issue of the contract negotiations that are going on at the airport and have been going on now for two years. You've heard me say this before. I think it's going to be an incredible, 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 excuse me, benefit to South Bend and St. Joe's County if we get the double track from Chicago on the South Shoreline started and done as quickly as possible. It's going to bring new business, tourists, and then economic upbeat for our county and for the city within our county. So if Mr. Dagel is still there, once again, you know, I spoke briefly at the last airport meeting. I encourage you to get that done and completed as quickly as possible. And just one, one follow-up, I'm encouraged that some on the council are so interested in the city's attempts to create a new homeless shelter in the city. I'm hoping that's precursor to the county stepping up and helping with the financing of that. We need to help the most vulnerable in our community, so keep up the interest and add some money to the pot. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online who wishes to take advantage of privilege of the floor? Being no one, privilege of the floor is now over. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Root?
Mr. Katanzrite?
Before we adjourn, and I don't know, maybe going back to privilege of the floor, I would be remiss if I had to take a minute to recognize our longstanding administrative assistant, Jen Preawatt, who's leaving our employ very soon. She's been an important asset to the county council. Things that come to mind when I think of Jen are professionalism, passionate, dedicated, very knowledgeable, very difficult traits for whomever has to come and attempt to fill her shoes. It's a difficult job to learn, but it's been a pleasure working with her over the last 10 years, closer to 11, I think, isn't it, Jen, or? Yeah. She's, she's been a very, very important part of our team, and we've certainly got to miss her and wish her the best in her future endeavors. And I'm very disappointed that she's leaving, but she has to make the decisions which guide her life. But I want to thank her for her service to the county.
Mr. Root?
Mr. Thomas?
I would also like to talk about Jen Preawatt. I'm a, I'm a freshman, and just here over a year. Jen, you taught me the ropes, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate that. I know I don't speak for myself. I know you have a lot of emotion, very hard, 10 years when you work at a place is very difficult to leave. I understand that. And I want you to know how much I appreciate you, and I know the other council members do, and you've done a lot for me and helped me along. And I don't have enough words to say thank you. I don't want to make you cry, but I really do appreciate you. All in favor of Jen Preawatt, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Jen.
Anyone else?
Yes. I also, it won't be the same here without Jen. I was caucused in in January of 2013, and Jen was already working here. I was the first woman to be on the county council in 20 years, so it was nice to have another woman in the office. And she was remarkably helpful in, again, helping orient me to my role, always there to answer questions, get information for us, for me, even if it was last-minute requests sometimes. But I will really miss Jen and her, her professional help and her help all along, because we've worked together ever since I've been on the council. So good luck on, on your next journey here, Jen.
Jen, I'd like to say thank you, too. As one of the ones up here who's been here the whole time, you've been here. We've been together a long time up here. So I've been here from the beginning with you, and I just want to thank you. You look out for us, you serve us, you take care of us, you give us treats when we need them, and you give us advice when we need that, too. And, you know, the first nine or 10 years, it was one relationship. In the last year and two months, it's been a different one, and so I've gotten to know you even in a, in a deeper way over the last year, if we've worked very closely together to make this office run. And I can't thank you enough for all your help in helping me to do this job to the best of my ability. So thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Jen, I had the privilege of meeting you before being on the council, working and volunteering Kama Island Fest in Mishawaka. I won't belabor the point of your contributions to the council, but I want to focus on the fact that you're a supporter of our community, a part of that community, and I look forward to seeing you still around the community. So thank you so much.
Jen, what I want to say is more for your mother, too, and for you. My first day at job in this county city building, February 1st of 1999, when I met your mom in payroll, she told me I should run for office someday. And I always appreciate that. And it was so nice that her daughter was here that I could work with. So thank you to both of
Mr. Schetzel?
I had a high school teacher who once taught us, always said, if you can find one thing to like about somebody, you can work with them. And I teach that to my students now, and you know, the 2020 local elections were tough, you know, both sides, a lot of rankering back and forth, and I know Jen is, leans towards the other side, and that's fine. And so I came in thinking, like my high school teacher had taught me, find one thing to like about her, find one thing to like about her. And I found lots of things to like about you, Jen. So thank you.
Okay. I could probably go on for two hours, two or three hours, simply because, as everyone knows in this room, I had the pleasure of being the president of this council, and I, and I mean that sincerely, the pleasure of being the president of this council for 20 years. And 10 of those 20 years, Jen Preawatt was the administrator. And between Jen always being willing to go the extra mile, and in a lot of cases with Mr. Dalton, as far as proper legal paperwork that had to get done, there were a lot of long hours spent making sure that that happened, and she always did it with a smile. And like I said, you know, she was here 10 years, and I was president 10 years before that. I think when I started on the council, she probably was in the romper room, you know? But all I can say is, you know, I've obviously worked with several other administrators, and they were all good. But Jennifer just, just brought a passion to the job and a thirst to always learn more and be the best that she could be. And Jennifer, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for everything. I mean that.
My last? What I love is when I come into that room and I see your big smiling face and your big personality taking up the room. And I hate when I stop by and it's dark in there. And so thank you so much for having, just helping us and being a friend to me and being a friend to my little boys. It's been a pleasure working with you this year.
Thank you, Jen, and I hope you won't be a stranger around here. Know you're always welcome to come back and visit us. Thank you.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Ayes have it, we are adjourned.